Let's dance.
The time is 6:35 PM and we are officially calling the Inkster Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I was about to say roll call please, but Commissioner A.C. Williams hasn't excused absence. So I'll do the roll. She hasn't excused absence and I did not hear from Commissioner Davis.
He's coming up now.
Oh, he's coming up, okay. Well, that looks like the only one that is absent, so Commissioner Cheryl Hens Bradford.
Present.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Present.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Commissioner Stephen Chisholm is present. Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner T. Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Willis.
Present.
And Commissioner Darryl Davis. We have a quorum. So let's see, one excuse and that is A.C. Williams. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
Alrighty. Are there any questions or concerns? I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, I'll give you one second.
I need my packet first. Derek, we need our packet.
You got one for yourself?
So yeah. Only eight commissioners tonight and one absent, okay. Cool. Um, has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? Alrighty, are there any questions or concerns right now? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number three, adoption of minutes. Adoption of May 27, 2025 meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, I have.
Alrighty, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four. This is the first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda. It looks as if both of the items that are scheduled under public hearing are also scheduled under new business. So other than that, I don't think we have anything else for the agenda for the general public to speak to unless someone wanted to speak to the meeting minutes. Hearing and seeing no movement, we are moving right along down to item number five, public hearings, which we have two. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearings.
And make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Willis and seconded by Commissioner McDaniel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, public hearing now open. The first public hearing is case, or item A, case SLU 25-04, 30181 Michigan Avenue. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a special land use permit to allow for minor vehicle repair tire shop in the B3 general business zone district at 30181 Michigan Avenue. Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we have a request for minor minor vehicle repair facilities, or for this case, a tire shop. It requires a special land use, so that's why we had to list it. It was posted in the newspaper as required and the applicant is here. So they are proposing to use the facility. Had a conversation with them just recently and they said that actually it would be both sides of the building because the building is actually in half, so it would be 7,000 square feet as opposed to the 3,000 and some change roughly. That being the case, our recommendation that I would have based on the master plan and what have you, would consider a recommendation of it with the following conditions, that a final site plan be required. The one thing that did initially pop up when going through the site plan requirements is that our site plan requires, in special land use for this type of use, it requires 10,000 square feet minimum. And they only have 7,000, it would be roughly 6,000 and some change. 76,000, so they need to, if it was approved by the city council, they would have to go to the planning ZBA to be allowed to use the use. And so set forth certain conditions as far as not being able to sell cars and things of that nature. I think it's 12 items, 10, 12 items as I stated. Is there any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or administration at this time?
What's the purpose behind the minimum of 10,000, if you know?
Other than there was, the ordinance was changed at some point to require that.
And I know we're going through a zoning amendment soon also, so if we decide to approve this, we can make a condition on the ZBA granting the variance and/or the ordinance change, zoning change.
Alrighty. And I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so we're going to hear from the applicant and then we'll turn it over to the public for any questions or concerns that they may have. So the applicant or representative for the applicant may approach the podium at this time. And state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Fadi Tofik, here on behalf of Platinum Tires regarding our location in the city of Inkster. I'd like to clarify that our business was fully established and operation before the city's recent decision approximately four months ago to how approval of new tire shops. We held a valid business license which was later revoked to an SLU issue, not because of any failure on our part to follow the rules. The property we operate from is zoned for minor auto repair and we invested significant time and money and resources into remodeling the facility to be clean, safe, and professional. We are committed to maintain a respectful and well-kept operation. Beyond business, we are proud to be active members of the community. We offer deep discounts to local churches and residents in need. And we're dedicated to being good neighbors in every sense. We respectfully ask for your approval to continue operation at this location so we can honor our lease and protect our investment and most importantly, continue serving the city of Inkster with honesty. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any question for the applicant or Commissioner T. Williams?
Uh, yes, and my fellow commissioners, we kind of have a chance to peruse this, this just came to us right before the meeting, so. On page six of the documentation that you provided, can you give us a little more explanation of this? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Hassan Bezi, I'm an attorney and also a friend of the owner. And Mr. Sabro, you want to step up with me by a little bit and we can explain it to us? So when my client purchased this property, it was, I guess, and he'll clarify more of the details and fill in the gaps here, it was a collision shop for years. I guess it closed down, the license somehow it was sold to another person and I guess the license was not renewed, so it was revoked. The person that it was sold to did not, did not complete the process. Didn't complete the sale, so I went back to the original owner that my client bought it here. He came here, rented it out, debt, Dunkin' Donuts and what was it, sorry?
Jack in the Box.
Jack in the Box. My client reached out to the representative and showed them the sites, did a file just like this, a presentation to this, and they are interested in land leasing this property.
They flew from North Carolina, Mr. Walton, he's the supervisor, he was very interested in it because there's a donut shop, as you guys know, in Telegraph and Michigan Avenue.
Yes.
All the Inkster people driving over there instead of having it in our city.
Interference.
So, and since it's zoned for this, you know, we bring in something to the city what they want. And we applied first as a collision, but the zoning has changed. And we respected that and we went with the minor. I have a mortgage to pay, they are part of the mortgage to pay once, once the lease and everything with your approval, once they approve, we move into the second phase. And we can continue moving to the second phase with Mr. Walton for Jack in the Box. They looking for another location, they're not looking in Dearborn, they're looking somewhere else, I think in Westland. Once the other location approved, they're going to bring everything to the city. And the mayor is going to cut the ribbon hopefully.
Hopefully.
It's about time you cut some good ribbons.
Cut some ribbons.
And you're all going to be invited hopefully.
So it's potential, there's, again, this is just in the air right now, but obviously we're trying to get the place lit up, renewed, bring new businesses to the area, so that's what we're trying to do. I believe it also has a lot of the group of church members and people are supportive. If you want to guys hear from this business, like the tenant said, they give out major discounts to Inkster residents, to the local churches, so they're ready to go. They're active, they're hungry, and they're here to stay in Inkster and support everybody in Inkster.
And just give some little clarification, what happened, they originally applied for their business license, the clerk's office issued it in air, our air, not their air. Because they didn't realize they needed a special land use before they got the business license. So then we later revoked it a few days later and then they came, started this process to come before it.
So I got, yeah. So he didn't go ahead and intentionally just open up there and put a tire shop. It was something that I wanted to clarify. So that wasn't something that he did intentionally. They issued the license, then it was revoked. As soon as they revoked, they closed the business down and proceeded with this. So he's been closed down for how many months?
Two and a half months.
Two and a half months.
And we tried to get a special meeting last, but people weren't available because we weren't supposed to have a meeting, so that's why we moved it up this month. So, because they've been waiting, closed, we want to at least get a decision so they could, you know, move forward.
Any questions? Are you done? Okay, commissioners to my right, any questions? Oh, commissioners to my left. Alrighty. I'm sorry.
So you guys are doing a tire shop, I noticed you said something about a towing company, what is that?
I'm sorry.
You guys are strictly doing a tire shop?
Yeah, right now it's tire shop, he occupies, I think, just like the client said, Mr. Adele, it's like roughly around 7,000 square feet. He's currently occupying half of the location right now. If necessary, they will bring in, they will fulfill the rest of the place out. And if not, hopefully we can get it approved and get it amended and bring another business into the other location, other side. But like you said, I think Mr. Adele said that there's no cars towing and stuff like this. There's literally nothing, like there's no tow trucks being hauled and dispatched from there, is that correct? I mean, at most there'll be a tow truck driving, dropping it off and leaving right away.
That's why I asked, I see this is 25-hour towing, so, okay.
Yeah.
Can you guys explain some of the minor repairs you'll be doing and how that's different from major repairs?
There'll be no minor repairs, just strictly tire changes.
Just tire change?
Strictly tire change.
Yeah, so no, like, what do you call, but again, you know, like I was telling Mr. Adele, like I do a lot in Dearborn too. Minor repairs can be considered buffing out a car out of a car wash, so it's not like it's very broad, I guess.
Right. Go ahead.
Will you be selling tires also?
Yes. New and used tires installed and everything. And for the towing parts, like we provide the towing service, like we can, we have people that we can call them and help the customer bring their car up to us.
Yeah, but there won't be no dispatch and nothing there.
Anything further commissioners before we turn it over to the general public? Alrighty. Thank you, again, this is a public hearing and right now we are talking about special land use 25-04, which is located at 30181 Michigan Avenue. This is for a minor vehicle repair tire shop in the B3 general business zone district. If there is anyone from the general public who wishes to speak to that matter at this time, please approach the podium, state your first and last name for the record and state your first and last name for the record.
Hello, my name is Keith LaCroy, excuse my appearance. I have a tow truck and business myself, father and three sons towing and hauling, I know these gentlemen. They, I am a member also of Newburgh Baptist Church. Pastor Stevens is our pastor there. And these guys have really been generous with our church and also in my community and my family. Just some here lately, they had something in Inkster Park, Mary U was there also. And the guys donated the ice cream for the kids for like a couple hours. Some other things they have done for the community and our church also. People didn't have enough to buy used tires. They have donated tires, you know, for women's who, single parents and things like that. I sent my niece up there one time I was in my tow truck and they took her, her also. So like I said, these are some upstanding guys. And also, we here in the city of Inkster, we don't have a Masonic hall. I don't know if you guys know that or not, but I'm part of the Masons also. And we was, sometime we have, they have another location on Inkster Road at Van Buren. And we have some meetings at their location up there also. So this location here in Inkster would be very well appreciated. Some of us brothers can get together in our own city. My wife, I've been here since 1995. My wife is the Matthews family, she's born and raised here in Inkster. And like I say, these guys are upstanding guys and it'd be nice to have a Masonic hall where some of us brothers can get together and meet, even if it's not organized. Because I don't know, you know, it only take three of us to open up a hall. And that's what we're looking forward to also at this location. Like I say, these guys, the location they have on Inkster Road and Van Buren, they keep it nice and clean. No whole bunch of racket, ain't nobody standing up there just hanging out. So that's another thing. Like I say, these guys, Adam, I talk to Adam once or twice a week about business or just things in general. Me and him have been talking about outreach programs for the kids, giving back to the kids, donating bikes. And they with it, they on board. So like I said, they'd be great for the city of Inkster and that's what we're looking forward to. Alright, God bless you, if you have any questions for me.
So you said that you would be setting up meetings for the Masonic hall at the tire shop?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that they allowed us to meet at their location on Inkster Road and Van Buren to have a, just, you know, just break bread, if I may say respectfully, without revealing. Right. But that's all I was saying, that, you know, we get together and drink coffee and talk about things over there in the east. So that's what I have to say about that.
So you're a traveling man.
How old is your grandmother, sir?
I didn't hear that.
How old is your grandmother? Where's Ivory Key hidden? But anyway, any more questions for me? That's over everybody's head. And anyway, any more questions?
Nope, no more questions or Estelle Tang, which language to be discussed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak to this matter at this time? Alrighty, hearing none, commissioners, I'm sorry.
Young man.
I've been knowing these brothers for a long time, they hired me, I had worked for them. And my family, you know, grew up in Inkster, my name Dwayne Boone. And they always helped.
Dwayne Boone.
Dwayne Boone.
No problem.
They always help peoples, you know. And, you know, I always send everybody down, even when I don't be there, I say, go down and mess with my brother Elman, they'll take care of you. They always took care of people, they broke down, they called me, can you go help them off the road? They always be good peoples, they always be good to me, the door always be open, you know. They always help me. Help people in Inkster.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak at this time? If not, are there any final comments from the commissioners? Hearing and seeing none, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing for item A.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner T. Williams and seconded by Commissioner Willis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item B. Excuse me. Case number SLU 25-05, 715 Inkster Road. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a special land use permit to allow for a nursing home, supportive residential facility for non-ambulatory individuals in the B2, thoroughfare mixed-use business zone district at 715 Inkster Road. Is there a motion to open up public hearing for this item?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved by Mayor Nolan and seconded by Commissioner Willis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, the public hearing is now over. I've read the summary already, Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
Okay, so this facility, 715 Inkster Road, is a currently vacant. It's, they had a number of applicants come and try to revitalize it. It's approximately 4,960 square feet building. And reviewing it, it requires a special land use for a nursing home or the non-ambulatory individuals, which is a facility that has people looking at, has staff that's there to help the residents, things of that nature. In the B2, that is an allowable use by special land use. And so I've gone through the special land use requirements and for most of it, it appears to be in harmony with the master plan, which is to utilize things, these type of services in a B2, harmony with existing character improvement to a community. Would be an improvement as opposed to being vacant, as to have some utilized property and things of that nature. And based on that, I would recommend approval of the proposed use.
Alrighty, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner T. Williams.
I remember from the previous several parties that were trying to do a facility in that building that there was concern with parking.
Yes, well, if you, the applicant had a very good consultant who added some components to the thing. They have an agreement with the school.
Okay, fine, they got the agreement, okay, okay. That's all I need to do.
Uh, Inkster Prep. Inkster Prep, the elementary school.
So for those who are not aware of this previous, because this has been, as the director stated, this has been to this body on multiple occasions, there was an issue with the parking and they had to have permission from the school that is, I'm guessing for back, lack of better word, adjacent.
Next to it, yeah.
Yeah, adjacent to the building in question. The building itself really doesn't have any parking. So in order for any entity to go in there, they would have to have the permission of the school to share the.
Joint access agreement.
Yeah, so and apparently they were able to change that, so that was the reason why my question was changed to that.
And that's in the package if you want to look at it.
Yeah, I saw it now, okay.
Yeah, because just piggybacking on that, the last time the other applicants came before us, they were going to have to build an entire new parking lot out front, pave, tie in the Wayne County drain and that's going to be quite expensive. And that was all dependent upon closing, I guess the deal just never went through, so. Alrighty, from that, if an applicant is here or a representative on behalf of the applicant, please approach and state your name for the record.
My name is Dr. Teresa Smith, I'm with Vesco Management and I am here representing the applicant for the 715 Inkster Road permit app. As you're aware, the building has been vacant for some time and we really believe that the proposed use is an effective, responsible reuse for the facility. It addresses many concerns that were identified in the Inkster 2025 plan, including the repurposing of an existing empty building is also going to create jobs. We're anticipating 10, six to 10 initially and that could easily grow in excess of 12 full-time positions. We will absolutely recruit within the city of Inkster. Our company has a long history of hiring from the city of Inkster and anticipate that these positions will be filled by residents. The facility will be occupied specifically by non-ambulatory individuals. This overcomes any concerns about any disruption to the surrounding businesses or community. They can't technically leave the facility by themselves, they're physically unable. If they leave the facility, they will be accompanied at all times. There will not be any significant changes to the exterior of the building, so there will be no disruption of what the current environment looks like. It's from the pictures, I'm sure you can see that it's a beautifully, beautifully laid-out building for this type of population. It was originally designed for communal living. It's got accessible bedrooms, accessible bathrooms, it's got communal kitchens. It's really designed for that. And we believe that the solution that we've developed addresses several critical needs. This is an underserved population, it's creating accessible housing in the city of Inkster. It's going to create income and jobs, which are all critical points that, you know, every type of development should be looking towards. We respectfully request that you support our application and be open for any questions you might have.
That was very thorough, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant's representative at this time?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry ma'am, don't sit down just yet, sorry about that.
For one, you're saying non-ambulatory patients. I guess I'm sensitive as a matter because I had a whole last year with a really, with a relative of mine that had to have nursing care assistance. This is, for one, how many people will your place hold?
Technically, we are looking at housing six individuals at this point because we're only looking to use the first floor.
Only six?
It has six, six residents on the first floor.
Okay, there is, are you planning on expanding it?
It has accessibility to the second floor, but at this point, because we're looking at non-ambulatory individuals, we primarily want to focus on the first floor and use that for accessibility issues. And so right now, the building will house, under the current proposal, six individuals.
Very good. How does, how does one make application for your place if it's too premature to get that?
Well, it's a little premature, but once we get it going, we will come back with that information to the commissioners and make sure that it's available to the community as well because we know it's a critical need, there's a lot of demand for this and quality care in a accessible building is, we know, tough to find.
Right, thank you so much.
Any commissioners, Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes, I know that building is a fairly old building, it's been there for many years. Is it handicap accessible?
Yes.
For the patients that will be housed there?
Yes, the building is fully handicap accessible, it has, it already has a handicap ramp to the building. All of the rooms have handicap accessibility already, they were built and designed that way. And so they won't require any modifications to meet the requirements for that type of population.
AC and all of that, sure.
Everything, this facility will be operated at the top standard. It's a commitment to this community and it's a commitment to the population and it's going to be done right.
Commissioners, any further questions?
I got a joke.
You got a joke?
You gonna buy the one off John Daly next? I think that was a serious question, not a joke. Yeah, actually, under, some years back, I had an opportunity to tour this facility and I was impressed because a lot of times our vacant buildings go dilapidated and they are not weatherized or not kept up and we're begging people to buy them and bring them up to code and there's so much they have to invest and those applicants walk away as well. This one was just like someone was living in it yesterday, although they weren't, but, and that was back then. So I'm quite sure it's, you know, still to those particular standards, which we are appreciative of when builders like that stay in function and condition.
If I can add, there is a video link in the presentation, if you go to that link.
These are current?
These are current, these were just a month ago.
If you want to go back to the packet that was provided by Derek, there's some photos with the link there that shows, as you just said, that the current status of the property.
And the link is actually a video that shows a real-time walkthrough of the asset, which gives you even a better perspective of what the quality of this facility is and what we're looking to use it for and how it aligns with the goals that we're trying to accomplish here. It's a really great asset, it's something that the city of Inkster should be proud of.
So like I said, it's a really nice building, so it used to be like a girl's home, I used to mentor there. So I used to go all the time as a program, as a part of.
Alrighty, commissioners, if you don't have anything further at this time, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to the general public since this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the general public that wishes to speak to this matter located at 715 Inkster Road? If so, please approach the podium and state your first and last name for the record.
Here, if I'm.
Go right ahead.
If in your package, Derek. Um, in your package, there is one letter that we received, um, that was, uh, against the, the proposed use. I don't know if you want to read it into the record.
Read, somebody need to read it into the record.
Well, um, which page or which?
I, I have it.
Derek, you can read it.
I can read?
You can read it.
Okay. July eighth, twenty twenty-five, Roger Stone, Inkster Road, uh, City of Inkster Planning Department, two six, two five, um, Trail Bridge, in regarding case number twenty-five oh five SLU. I am opposed to the special land use to allow for a nursing home facility in the B two area of the city of Inkster. Well, the consideration of the special land use for a nursing home and supportive residential facility would add considerable traffic congestion to an already congested Inkster Preparatory Academy School area. Parent drop-off and parent pickup and nursing home business with multiple shifts would conflict. Staff shift changes create unwanted traffic and safety concern through the neighborhoods on Inkster Road, Woodsfield, Avondale and Sherborne Drives. Typical school yard noise, which significantly benefits children's development due to, due to the proximity of the potential nursing home facility to Inkster Preparatory Academy could dis, disrupt residents, creating a negative impact. This makes nursing home residential facilities inappropriate for the rest, recovery and well-being of potential residents. The location of the building lacks fencing and green space for staff and residents, an important aspect for the health and well-being of the staff and residents and neighbors. I appreciate the opportunity to express my concerns and oppose the matter of change of use for a neighborhood, excuse me, uh, nursing home and supportive residential facility. Thank you, Roger Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdell. Alright, commissioners, um, I know some of us were looking through just to see the pictures in the packet and the letter was just read. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Willis.
I don't know, just, just to make a comment on, on, on the letter, um.
Comment on the letter?
Yeah, far as, far as dealing with, uh, there's only post, there's only six residents that are going to be there.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Yes, that's what the representative said.
Yeah, so I, I don't see it, uh, with six residents being there, it can't congest the area too much.
It could be six people in a house across the street from the school.
Correct. Yeah, so that doesn't make.
Makes sense. Anybody else?
And I believe also one of the things he said about lack of fencing, they do have a back area with, um, if you look, um, canopy and things of that nature, so. I'm not exactly sure what he was saying regarding that, but there is a.
Oh, yeah, there is fencing, I see it right there. Entire fencing area. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dowdell. Thank you, Mr., uh, Commissioner Willis. Anybody else from the commissioners? Hearing none and no one from the general public, the mo, uh, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing from item B.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner T. Willis and seconded by Commissioner Willis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. We're down to unfinished business. I don't believe we have any at this time. So we're down to new business. New business is item seven eight, case number SLU two five dash zero four, three zero one eight one Michigan Avenue. Purpose of this hearing is to consider a special land use permit to allow for a minor vehicle repair tire shop in the B three general business zone district at three zero one eight one Michigan Avenue. I believe we have discussed this matter ad nauseam during the public hearing. So the floor is open for a motion to recommend the special land use to Inkster City Council.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Nolan and seconded by Commissioner T. Willis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item seven B, case number SLU two five dash zero five for seven fifteen Inkster Road. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a special land use permit to allow for a nursing home, supportive residential facility for non-ambulatory individuals in the B two thoroughfare mixed-use business zone district at seven one five Inkster Road. Again, we have discussed this matter ad nauseam in the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion to recommend the special land use to Inkster City Council.
So moved, support.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner T. Willis and seconded by Commissioner Hayes Bradford. Is there any further?
Williams.
Oh, Williams, I apologize. Correction, it was moved by.
I thought that you found out that we loke.
We will not have discussion on that. I want a public hearing on that. Thank you, Commissioner McDaniel for correcting me on that. It's been moved by Commissioner T. Williams and seconded by Commissioner Hayes Bradford. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to miscellaneous, item number eight miscellaneous. Do we have anything under miscellaneous, Mr. Dowdell or commissioners?
I don't have anything.
Alrighty, thank you.
I have a miscellaneous.
Go right ahead.
This is a cannabis jazz club.
Yes.
Where did that come from?
That u, used to be a dispensary prior to, years ago. So that was the, I think our last dispensary opened as a result of a lawsuit. So it, it was a court order or we entered into a court order settlement.
Settlement.
For that to be, uh, open. That was years ago. It was several years ago.
Oh, so, so you grabbed it filed it in basically?
Essentially, because you know our limit, uh, well, it used to be eight, it's now four. Um, but we had eight open and then, but that one had the right to open because of a lawsuit, civil lawsuit. So that is number nine, uh, but that will be the last one.
Is it actually?
No, no.
It's not a jazz club.
No, it's not, no, no, no.
That's just the name of it. There's another one on Telegraph in six or seven mile.
Six mile.
Six mile, so that they call it, they were trying to brand it, so they called it the same. A lot of people call and say, we have a jazz club. No, it's not a jazz club. But that's the name.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anything further under miscellaneous?
Oh, well, I got a question.
Go right ahead.
Uh, it's a building on Inkster Road and it got like a seven eleven style on it.
Yeah.
What is that?
I, I forget the side street. I don't know what that is. It looks, it's green, orange and white.
Yeah, like a seven eleven or something.
They haven't put up any words on the sign. So Inkster Road on the north side between Michigan and Avondale, on the, on the east side of the street.
Right before the gas station.
Yeah, yeah, for the gas station.
You ride by, you'll see like, like I said, what's that, North River or?
Like the granite place?
Used to be the tap, tap and nevo's or something when, when we were.
Nah, it's a little closer to Michigan.
You said the granite place.
Where the granite place used to be.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's like West River Park in Lucerne over there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's a builder doing remodel.
Haven't figured it out. We'll check, see if they put any permits maybe.
They haven't did a reactivity.
Okay. Yeah, they're moving, they're definitely working in that. Oh, well, alrighty, thank you. Um, Commissioner McDaniel.
I'd like the status on the coffee shop on Michigan Avenue.
Big B Coffee.
He asked at the last meeting about the status.
I mean, it.
I don't have anything to, to, to report at this time. The applicant hasn't moved forward or brought any information as far as what, what's going on.
Yeah, I think the last, there were some revisions to the site plan that needed to be done for elevations to the building. And this was months and months and months ago. And applicant has still not turned that in. I think they were going back and forth with DPS or the engineer, it was Carrie. They were going back and forth as to whether they should have to turn it in and, you know, why is it necessary? And I think we might be at a bit of an impasse because he has not turned it in.
My question also was about the outside.
Debris.
Debris that needs to be cleaned up if nothing else. It looks horrible on Michigan Avenue.
Oh, we can do that.
That's something we can direct to.
We can do code enforcement, yeah. They can write the citation.
Do they have, but I thought that was supposed to happen last month.
I, I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
That was my request last month was to. Is that debris cleaned up?
Y'all ignored them?
I, I, I guess we did. I apologize. We, we will.
I'm not taking the heat on that one.
Okay, are we looking for a report for next month about code enforcement?
Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow.
We'll do that.
Is there any type of timeframe that they have to finish this?
They do. Um, I believe after a year, they would have to come back if they don't complete it.
It's been a year.
Obviously, they should be, it should have been a year now.
I think it's two, I think it, is it one year or two years?
I, I can confirm.
Might be one year, it might be one. Because they got approved, it was before I was elected.
Yeah, yeah.
It's twenty twenty-five now.
So can we get a report on that also?
Yeah.
That's fine.
We need to follow up with them.
The old police department?
The old, oh, the old PD too. He was talking about the sports. But that hasn't been approved. I don't think, did that come before?
I don't think so.
I know they're working on the building, but I don't, I don't remember. I think it was sold and they showed renderings, but.
They did show renderings, but they have, they have not, uh, did reactivity.
Okay. Oh, just so you all know, um, I had inquired because I did have a resident reach out in fear that the old hookah lounge, which is now going to be a bakery, um, I did have Mr. Dowdell and the building department and code enforcement respond back to my emails, letting me know, and this was right before the signage went up. But three, six, four Inkster Road, which was the volcano hookah, is now going to be a, a pastry shop or a bakery.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you go past now, the signs are up and they're. Working on that.
So it's a bakery.
Yeah, that's it.
The old cap and nevo?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
It's a bar, it's a bar too.
Yep, side pop.
Side pop.
Side pop, yeah.
I had a resident.
You know all about that.
I had a resident reach out because they were in fear because they went around the community and they were looking, they, just like what you saw with the jazz cannabis lounge, um, they were unaware of why that it opened, how it opened and everything, so I explained that and they were asking about the, at the time, the signs weren't up and they were scared that another one was about to pop in. So I reached out, assured them that that wasn't the case, um, and they had another question. About a different building, but they couldn't give me the address. Not they couldn't, they just didn't provide it at that time because they wanted us to know. Because a lot of times, you know, when we have those buildings that are being worked on, we ask for those addresses so we can investigate with code enforcement building or, um, planning department, but I reassured them that was not going to be another dispensary and that we had in fact lowered the threshold and, uh, put the cap, you know, on there, put the cap on it, then lowered the threshold and we're done with that particular, uh, thing for.
Type of business.
Type of business, yes. Alrighty, if there's nothing further under miscellaneous, we're moving down to item number nine, which is a second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. So anyone from the general public can approach this podium, state their name, first and last name for the record and address this body. Hearing and seeing no, hearing and seeing no movement, we're down to item number ten, adjournment.
So moved.
It's been properly moved twice, right? Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Nolan and seconded by Commissioner McDaniel. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. The time is seven seventeen. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for being here.